All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Good evening, everyone. Tom, would you please, well, before the roll call, wouldn't mind introducing Isaac Oboya. He's our newest council honorary council member. Isaac, if you could, you want to just say a few words about yourself, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Isaac Oboya, as you have heard from the mayor. I am honored to be one of the honorary city council of Austin. I recently came from Africa and I'm happy to get in touch with them. Excuse me with James Pashuta, who enabled me to be here today. I work as a district success coach at Austin Public Schools. I'm looking forward to be here for the next three months. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, welcome.
All right, Tom, roll call, please.
Mayor King.
Present.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Fisher.
Present.
Pashusta.
Present.
Kelly.
Present.
Posma.
Present.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. I have number one's a motion for the adoption of the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have number two is a motion approving our minutes from May twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Aye.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. That could have gone better.
I have number three, under recognitions and awards, we have none. I have number four is a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under petitions and requests, we have a resolution for I have number five, which is approving a lease agreement with Thompson Sanitation. Stephen.
So in your backup material is information that we carried forward from our work session last council meeting, where we talked about lease agreement and operation of the Austin Transfer Station. Since then, we have been working with Thompson Sanitation to work out details of the lease agreement. And in your backup material was a draft lease agreement as of Thursday morning when we got that out to you. We've continued to work on the agreement and have have an update for you. I wanted to touch on some items that have changed from the draft that was submitted to you in the backup material. Highlighted in this lease agreement, besides edits that were corrected, typos from how we transferred this document, we've gotten those corrected from your backup material. Plus, these items in red have have changed and want to touch on why and what's being done with that. So in the current document, the lease agreement is broken out into an initial term and then two-year renewal periods that would occur following that. This has been done in order to give both the city and also the contractor some flexibility with unknowns in the future. For the contractor, those unknowns would be other waste haulers coming into the community and taking some of their projected volumes. And it could have an impact on, not taking their volumes, but taking away volume from the transfer station, which could have an impact on their overall lease and operation of it. Exactly a similar situation to where we're at currently with waste management. So to provide them some security and flexibility, we've broken out that original seven-year term into one initial two-year term, followed by a first and a second renewal option each of those two years and a third term of one year, which most likely would get modified when we get to that time point. We've also established a baseline of tons through the transfer station. Thompson Sanitation is basing these renewal or these yearly lease rates based on approximately thirteen hundred tons per month. So we've set a baseline there and that will give us something to monitor as we move forward. That base amount of thirteen hundred tons per month, we may see success and that could go up and could have and would then likely have an impact positively on our lease agreement. Or that thirteen hundred tons per month could go down and that would have a negative impact on future renewals for the lease amount. Other things that have changed from your original draft copy that's in your backup material is maintenance and repair responsibilities. That's been detailed a little bit more, indicating that the city is clarifying that the city is responsible for maintenance and repairs of the transfer station, scale and compactor. And then if those, so unfortunately, when there is a lightning storm, the transfer station tends to have issues. We've had, the scale has gone out on us a couple times over the last five years. And we've been able to quickly get those electronic components fixed. But we've detailed it in here that if if there is an outage or something is down at the transfer station for more than three business days, Thompson Sanitation, the monthly lease would be adjusted accordingly. So that seems fair. If they're not able to use the facility, their monthly lease is prorated and adjusted accordingly. So that is a change to this agreement that is from your, what was in your backup material.
Stephen, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
In the, deep in the back, on the technical specifications, we talk about lack of trailers being, downtime due to trailer shortage will be considered default. If we're gonna, if we're, if the city is going to ask for reasonable treatment, if the scale's down, can we tone down the language on our expectations of them? Maybe just throw in like excessive downtime or something like that?
Sure.
Just, please?
Yep. I think to, I think Thompson Sanitation, with their visibility of how we have managed trailers with waste management over the years, I think they have a comfort level, I'm speaking for them, but I think they have a comfort level with how we have worked with waste management over the years on trailer shortages. And I understand the the language is tight and we can finesse that a little bit.
Thank you.
In section, again, term lease, at the beginning of page four, we've detailed, again, those renewal terms. Here in the technical specifications, under general terms, we have indicated that we have set residential rate of eighty-six dollars and sixty-six cents per ton. That would, that would begin on July first of twenty twenty-four. And a commercial rate, we've also set demolition material rate of twelve dollars, a fee, a fine that can be assessed to those that come to the facility without being tarped. That is a concern. And then minimum load charges of twenty dollars. We we indicate, or we have spelled out, that the contractor may increase those rates on a yearly basis at a one-point-two-five percent rate. So we have that detail, that we have that set, the maximum that they could increase the rates. There is a concern that the location where they are discharging their municipal solid waste down at, in Lake Mills, Iowa, at Central Disposal, it is owned by another facility. Rates at that facility are outside of their control. And if those rates for disposing of the waste in Lake Mills would fluctuate extremely or unexpectedly, there's an opportunity for Thompson Sanitation to come back to the city and say, okay, these rates have ballooned, we need to find ways to to review this. Maybe it means increasing our rates at the transfer station. So this this section in red is to allow for for that opportunity if rates drastically change somewhere throughout the the lease agreement. Wanted to stress again, the building hours. We talked about this at the last meeting, but commercial haulers, the facility will be open for commercial haulers Monday through Friday, eight AM to four PM. And it'll be open first and third Saturday of each month from eight AM until noon. And then the public hours will match that. So that is an increase to our public hours. And I believe here, again, to create a baseline for that concern that if the landfill where the waste is going to would, for some reason, drastically make changes to their fee structure, we've established a baseline beginning July one of twenty twenty-four. The the current tipping fees for disposal of our waste in Lake Mills, Iowa, is forty-nine dollars. So it gives us a baseline that the Thompson Sanitation could come back to us in the future and say, hey, it's ballooned to X amount, we need to relook at some of these things. So trying to set some baseline volumes of thirteen hundred tons per month and a baseline for for their fees, some of those things that are outside of their control, we've identified them here at the start. And then it'll give us something to look at in the future when it comes time to review. So with that, those are the changes from what was in your backup material. Will Harmon is here again from Thompson Sanitation, if you have any questions for him. But with that, I would open it up to the council if you have any additional questions.
Stephen, I I think the two-year renewal option makes sense. I saw seven years and I was like, that's kind of long for one of these sorts of things. But I'm wondering, could you show us what the language is for how far out they have to tell us that they want to get out of it? Because I feel like we got caught scrambling a little bit this time and I'd like to build a little more leeway there if we can. Is it sixty days?
It's six months.
Six months?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And we only had like sixty days this time, I think, right?
If if there's no changes planned and there's no discussion, the the terms automatically roll over.
Okay.
But if someone wants to stop or make a change to the terms, then it's six months.
Okay, that's perfect.
Hey, Stephen, two questions for you. One is, on the addition of the three days that the scale's down, what probability do we think that we'll be able to repair that? Like, is it a seventy-five percent plus that we'll probably get it repaired? Or do we think we'll have frequent issues where we're getting less than the lease payment?
The scale has been pretty quick turnaround. It it takes Kennedy Scales or a certified scale company to come in and do that work. We can't do it ourselves, so we're reliant on bringing in a separate contractor, so we're on their schedule. But the most recent outage, I think it was turned around in a day or two.
Okay.
I think it happened late in one week and it was repaired the following Monday.
Okay.
The other major item is the compactor. It's a hydraulic compactor, so hoses can break, specialized equipment in that type of of compactor. We we are able to do welding and fabricate things, but when it comes to some of the hydraulics, there again, we have to bring a contractor in. There's a possibility, if there was a major repair on that regarding the hydraulics, it could be pushing three days or more to repair something like that. But those are just based on wear and tear, try to keep up on those things and try to minimize those major repairs through maintenance.
Okay. And then second question, on the ten-dollar fee for non-tarped loads, is that something that's in place today? And the reason I ask is I'm just thinking about your average public weekend warrior who's loading a bunch of stuff into the back of the pickup truck. Are we gonna have a bunch of people that get fired up that I'm getting charged an extra ten bucks for not covering up everything in the back there because I didn't know about it?
C through F are all existing.
Okay.
And even A and B are existing, the rate just changed. So all of those items, A through F, are existing. A and B just changed in the rate amount. So they, people should be aware of that requirement.
Thank you.
Stephen, two two quick ones. The contract says that the contractor guarantee, or will staff the facility. Does that, does that assume that they will staff the facility for every hour it's open?
Yes.
Okay.
Plus, because there's cleanup time afterwards and that's detailed in there.
And second, I thought we had a specific, in the hazardous material stuff, I thought we had a specific exclusion about paint. It's not specifically excluded, because I thought we had to take that to the county site.
County household hazardous waste? Yep. We can, we can look at adding that, but yeah, I don't believe that is in there, from my recollection.
Would you please, just so we don't not?
Okay.
Needs to go to the county, let's do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? Otherwise, Steve, thanks for your work on this contract. I appreciate Thompson Sanitation stepping up. I really appreciate the extended public hours. That'll be excellent. Anything else, Mr. Lang?
That is all.
Good. All right, looking for a resolution to approve the lease agreement with Thompson Sanitation.
Move to approve.
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Absolutely.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passed with seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. I have number six, a motion requesting to obtain bids for tree removal. Jason?
Honorable Mayor, City Council. So staff is requesting authorization from council to begin the bid process to remove ash trees from city properties, boulevards and right-of-ways. Our forestry team currently estimates there's approximately two thousand ash trees on maintained city properties. With help from a matching grant from the Hormel Foundation, we are currently in the process of treating just about five hundred ash trees. We did a first round RFP for three hundred and a second round RFP to treat another additional two hundred as we identified trees that we felt were treatable. So by treating five hundred trees, now we've reduced the amount of trees that need to be removed from two thousand to fifteen hundred. So now we have this massive task of how do we remove these fifteen hundred trees? We've worked pretty in-depth with our parks crew. We believe that our parks crew can remove eight hundred trees over a four-year period. Right now, we are estimating we have four years. I will tell you that, I'm guessing, sitting here, one year from today, I might tell you that four-year window might be reaching out a little bit and we might need to bring that into three years because we are, we are noticing a lot of dead standing ash trees that we did not think were dead two months ago. So they are really quickly becoming infested. So we might have to move up that a little bit. But we also think that the parks crew can do more than that. We are being a little bit careful with our numbers. We wanted to leave it open because there are also trees that are non-maintained city properties, which are like the forested areas out at Todd Park, along some of the rivers, areas and things like that, that we want to be able to address if there's trees that become a safety issue. So we estimate parks crew to remove two hundred-plus trees per year over a three-year, three-to-four-year period. What we are proposing is to contract out for the removal of an additional one hundred seventy-five trees annually over a three-to-four-year period. We are also considering to have an alternate bid in increments of fifty trees in case when the bids come in, we might have funds available to do more than one hundred seventy-five trees. Maybe we can, we can do two hundred and twenty-five trees because the bids come in at a lesser cost than what we are anticipating. So I, to be honest, it's, it is possible that the overall total cost over a three-to-four-year period could exceed one million dollars for the removal of seven hundred trees. The city has been building up a fund balance in the general fund in effort to save funds for this project. And I should say that this issue will not go away. These trees are going to die and they are going to deteriorate quickly. They are going to become a hazard. Their boulevard trees will become hazards for vehicles, for roadways, for utilities, for houses. In our parks, they could be a hazard for playgrounds, along our trail systems. So we're, on the city side, we are tackling those hazardous trees first. And we would also contract out the same way. So the first year of removal will be for those trees that are further infested than others. And then that's why we're proposing to do portions now and not all fifteen hundred trees. Because one, it gives us time to look for grants. It gives us time to identify the worst trees that really need to be removed now. And then we can readdress and re-inspect trees in a year to identify the next round of trees to be removed. So our request is to contract for the removal of these trees. And if authorized, staff would complete the bid process, which is kind of a, it's a formal bid process because of the dollar amount that we're anticipating. So it will take some time. There's, you know, there's timeframes you have to honor for the bid process to go out to bid, to allow people to submit the bids. Then we have a bid opening and then, you know, the contract and all that stuff. Of course, we would have to come back to city council with whatever the the bids we receive. And so we would come back to council with what the bid results are, with a recommendation to council for for funding, basically, to allocate funds for this project. So staff's request is authorization from council to begin the bid process to contract out for the removal of ash trees located on city properties, boulevards and right-of-ways. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And Jason, this would be something that could be going all year round, the tree removal process?
Correct. We, let's see, we're at June. I suspect we're a good two months out for the bid process. So maybe removal starts September, which is a good October, September, October, good time to start. So we would probably look to have a one-year contract for the removal of these trees.
Jason, what does it cost the city to remove an ash tree right now?
For the city, we anticipate, depending on the tree, I mean, you could have a ten-inch diameter tree and a twenty-eight-inch diameter tree. So I guess the best way to answer that question is we have determined that the average diameter at breast height of tree that we have in Austin is twenty-one inches. So you take all of our trees, the average is twenty-one inches. So for a twenty-one-inch tree with no overhead power lines, no access issues, because fortunately, none of the city's trees are in backyards, so that's not an issue. But you have to consider the boulevard trees, power lines and trees, they have to remove from the top down. A tree out in a park can be fallen, the entire tree. So there is some differences, but we're estimating between a thousand and twelve hundred dollars per tree.
And by the city, you mean having crews who already work for us do this work?
Correct. And those numbers are, and we're actually fine tuning that number as we speak.
Is that a fully, and that's fully loaded?
The budget for the forestry department is three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for twenty twenty-four. So that's for all the forestry duties, cutting ash trees, trimming the boulevard trees, et cetera.
The the thousand to twelve hundred dollars is based on the number of staff. So we have a, we have two tree trimmers at a certain salary or wage. Then we have the operator and we have a truck driver. So those are the staff. And then we also have the equipment, the chipper, the the log truck, basically, and the bucket truck. So we we calculated the cost for those as well. And then the removal right now is at no cost. The stocks actually get taken south of town and they are milled. So there's no cost for that other than transportation. So it's fairly good number in that one thousand to twelve hundred dollars, depending on the tree.
So you want a million bucks to do seven hundred trees, which is fifteen hundred bucks a tree or so? I mean, I just, I just want to make sure this is a good, that we've thought through. Is this a good deal when you're comparing it to the real cost, the full cost, that we incur on a tree?
So I.
Please?
To point out, so the million dollars is just to give council the the reality of the, of the, of the potential cost of this project. I don't know that it's going to come to that. I don't want to give any numbers of the research I gave out because of, you know, if we're going to go out to bid, I don't want to hint to anybody that, oh, we have this much money laying around or it's going to, we're anticipating this cost. But I just want.
It's in your letter. That's what I'm asking.
I mean.
Part of the process is, we want to get bids to come back to see where they come in at before we ask council to approve the bids and come back with an actual dollar allocation. That also gives his staff time. Let's see how it goes in year one and year two. And maybe it's going to be more beneficial for us to have, maybe the bids will come in at five million dollars and we might come back. Because the council, would you hire four tree trimmers instead of two for an interim time period because it'll be cheaper?
Okay.
Yeah, honestly, if if the ash trees did not deteriorate so quickly, if it was like an oak tree issue where they can stand dead for ten or twelve years and and probably not be a liability, I would probably propose that we would do a majority, if not all of this, in-house. The problem is, we just don't have time. And like, like Tom said, when we get the bids back, we might consider alternate ways with additional tree trimmers. We may run into equipment issues, but we've, we've looked at this from every angle for probably the last three months.
Well, we, we, you know, a year ago, if you would ask us, if, you know, when you were asked, your predecessors asked the same question, we got an entirely different answer, which is, oh, no, we're going to do it all ourselves. So what has changed? Is it just the deterioration is of the trees were faster than we expected?
Well, we're, the city of Austin, there's, we're probably seven years into this. And so there's good and bad with that. The the good, I will say, is that we are learning from other cities that started being a little bit more proactive three, four years ago. So we're learning from their process, what's failed and what's done, what has worked well. We're focusing on what's worked well. But yes, we are finding that trees, we looked at, our, we have certified tree inspectors on staff with AmeriCorps and with our city employees, that three months ago, the tree, okay, it's not horrible. It's not treatable, but it's not horrible. Three months later, it's a dead standing tree that we just hadn't realized. We're, during leaf out, I guess the the best answer is during leaf out this year, which is in the last probably three weeks, is what we've noticed, how severe this infestation has become. And we don't have a lot of time anymore. Maybe we did a few years ago. I, you know, I don't know that for a fact, but it is happening quickly, more quickly, I think, than we ever thought.
And I think the predecessor was also looking for additional staff to do that. We got some phenomenal bids for a project that's underway with the Hormel Foundation grant. So this is kind of an extension on that. Let's see where bids come in and see if we can hammer, maybe through this in two years with the current bid versus four, with both of them doing it. It's just, until we get the actual bids back, we can't come back with the actual numbers that we can show you makes sense.
And I think, building on the questions, you know, Jason, as you put together, probably two requests for you. One is, as we go through, maybe Jason and Tom, if we can get that true, here's our cost per tree. Here's what the private contract comes in, because we've had a lot of conversations, to Jeff's point about this, and it's always been really tough to pin down a number. And like, I hear you on the ash trees changing, so that makes a lot of sense. At the same time, it was like, as we talked about tree trimmers in the past, it was, we've got all this money that's tied up, we do it super efficiently, we can do hundreds and hundreds of trees a year internally. You guys are the biggest morons in the world for thinking about, you know, bringing in a private contractor. So I think like, the ability to get a true, like, hey, this is twelve hundred, this is eight hundred or fifteen hundred would be really helpful for us long-term. And then the second piece is, as we think about this in the context of the total budget, is obviously, the ash issue, huge. You know, we know there's a level of risk and concern there. I think, I guess, the question I would have for all of us is, how do we start to do the cost benefit analysis of what are the costs and the risks associated with dedicating dollars here compared to the costs and benefits of some of these other things? Because resources are obviously finite. It's news to me that we've been building up a general fund just for trees, right? I think it's something that we've got to do, but I think that's going to be the question that we need to understand is, hey, there's a level of risk. How do we quantify the level of risk to the city liability-wise with everything else? Because I'm sure we're going to have more requests than we will, will total dollars to be able to help to make that. But I appreciate your leadership on this. I think you're taking a really good analytical strategic approach to it.
Hey, Senator, the two thousand city trees, are they, the two thousand city ash trees, are they all trees that need to be treated or removed? Are they total, total ash trees?
They are all ash trees.
And that's all of our ash trees, or that, is that just the number that need to be treated or removed?
So the two thousand ash trees is what we estimate are on maintained city properties. So by saying maintain, what I mean is boulevard trees or trees in parks that we mow around is probably the best way to say it.
Right.
We're not talking about trees that are in the back forty of Todd Park that are in kind of a forested area that we're not worried about. And we're also not talking about the trees along the rivers, which is why we anticipate, our our parks crew can probably remove two hundred and fifty, maybe a little bit more, and still trim and prune the rest of the city's trees. Once we get past two fifty, then we start neglecting the pruning, which is, we don't really want to get into that because then if we don't prune or trim for four years, then by the time we remove all the ash trees, now we're four years behind on all that. So so that brings that, that, that two thousand trees by, by, that's why we went with two hundred trees a year for the parks crew. They can do more. That leaves a little leeway for them to do these other trees that might come up. But out of those two thousand, we are treating five hundred trees. But out of those 2,000, we are treating 500 trees. That's where the number comes down to 1,500 trees that we need to remove.
All right. Any other questions?
Mayor, just a couple of things on the, whether it's INI or Storm Sewer or projects at the airport, we do a good job of analyzing whether or not it's something we can do with our internal staff. And we do try to mitigate, you know, bringing on staff. As one council member says, it's a million dollar commitment. So that played heavily in the bidding out component as well. And then I think something else that hasn't been stated, the AmeriCorps volunteers have really helped us in light years of quantifying more of these specifics than we had the benefit of before and wanted to mention that as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
I, I would just, I appreciate, I think we absolutely need to look at this. I think once you get some numbers, obviously it'll give us a little more information. I think some of the flexibility that we may have could be key here. You know, recently when the HRA, which I'm a member of the board, we had a building we had to demolish, you know, we, as part of that bidding process, we gave like a six month window in the winter when things are slow. And the number of the bids came lower than we anticipated because we were told that they liked the flexibility and they were going to kind of plug that in. So I'm sure that anybody with any sort of ash tree skills is probably, you know, up to their eyeballs and work right now and will be all summer. But looking at, you know, having it be part of that process that they know that it can be, you mentioned a year, whether it's winter, what have you, like, we have some flexibility with that if that helps with the number a little bit. And then the other, the one question I do have, just going back to previous tree trimmer discussions or whatnot, are those folks, they get pulled off of doing tree work or they have in the past? Is that still the case or with what we have going on with our regular tree work and ash tree, are they just, the rest of 2024, all they're going to do is tree trimming?
Primarily because of our situation, it's tree trimming. I will tell you that a few weeks ago, with the rain and sun and rain and sun, we did get behind on mowing. We did have to shift them over for probably about two week period. But we are, that is last resort. We are really trying to keep them focused on tree removal because it's a, it's a safety issue more so than being a few days behind on mowing a park, I believe. So, and then also that was before we really had all of our seasonals on board to help with mowing and, and we've gotten more seasonals on board since then. So that's, that's helped as well. So it was like in that transition of, of slowly getting seasonal started as they got out of school and came home from college to start working for us, they helped out a little bit. But now that we're mostly fully staffed for seasonals, I think it'll be focused back on trimming.
Okay. And that, and that makes sense. My, my thought was if something, mowing is a great example of something, it would probably be less expensive, do a little outsourcing on mowing to keep them tree trimming, right? Their value, trimming trees is probably greater to the city if we absolutely can do it. So I'm, I'm glad that you're kind of taking a look at that stuff.
Just to point out, there, you know, there are a lot of moving parts because of the safety issues. One of the, I'm not a big fan of going to remove the top of a tree because of safety and leaving the stalks, so leaving, you know, 12 feet tall there to go on to the next one because the equipment's already there and it's not that hard to fall that and put it on a dump truck. But we are finding ourselves having to do that occasionally because of the severity of how many trees we're finding now that are dead and standing. So we can top them and get them down. Now they're safe, they're not going to fall on somebody's roof or car. We'll come back later, full force and remove them. We're also not necessarily grinding all the stumps right away. That'll probably happen in October, November. So you'll see a little bit difference in our process just because of the severity and the, and really the liability and safety that's like right up top on, on our list. So.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Jason. I certainly appreciate your expertise on this and your thoughtful approach to it. Very good. Looking for a motion to find bids for tree removal.
So moved.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Item number seven is accepting donations in the city of Austin, and they are these, $500 from the Austin Area Foundation to the Culture and Arts Commission, $3,078 from the Eagles to the Nature Center Canoes, $2,500 from also the Eagles to the city flags, and $100 from Steve and Lynn Price for the 2024 Flower Program. We thank those folks, organizations and residents for those donations. Looking for a resolution accepting them.
So moved.
Second. Tom.
Councilmember.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
You bet.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes, 7-0, you're on.
Thank you, Tom. Item number eight is granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following locations. 8A is a motion for address of 506 12th Street Northeast, the Brito de Rouge property. In motion.
So moved.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 8B is 1306 11th Street Northwest, the Hastings property.
So moved.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Motion carries. Moving on to citizens addressing the council, is anyone in the audience wishing to speak to the city council of items that weren't on the agenda? Hearing done. Honorary councilmember comments. Isaac, it's your first night. Do you have any comments?
Yes.
All right. Well, welcome aboard. Also Representative Patty Mueller is here to report on maybe the session that closed and wherever you want to tell us, Patty, we're open to it.
Thank you. Well, thank you, city council and, and Mayor King for giving me a couple moments. So we've been about two weeks out of session and I will admit that this time of reentry has been a little bit more difficult for me for two reasons, how it ended and also because I decided to get dogs. So I have a proud owner of adopted two one-year-old shepherd lab mixes that are 80 pounds apiece. So they're fantastic. And of course, being the true Republican that I am, they're named Lincoln and Reagan. So there you go. Anyway, thank you for giving me a chance to, to address you just for a moment. I did want to talk about a couple of things that were passed and some of the chaos that happened over the last couple of weeks of session. There have, there, honestly, the biggest issue was the bonding bill. And of course, that was during a second term, a second year of the biennium that is supposed to be what we're supposed to do is pass a bonding bill. The bonding bill was, worked on a couple of, all the way through the time. And then at 11:30 that night, I, we were asked to vote on a cash bill, which means that they, the majority party just needs a majority. They do not need a super majority. That bill was never printed and given in, given to us. We do not know, I, I still to this day have no idea what was in that bill. It was never printed. We asked for a copy of the bill. We asked for a digital copy of the bill. There was never anything given to us when Leader Damuth asked for a copy of the bill. We were told our printers are behind and we can't do this, but you need to vote on it now. So there are rumors hanging around talking about how there was money in there for Hormel Institute. I don't have any way of knowing that because of the fact that I never saw a bill. That was the cash bill. And from what I understood, that the Hormel Institute would have been in the GO bill, which is the General Bonds Bill, and we never saw that bill. So none of that happened. That happened at 11:30 at night, the very last day. And so just putting some rumors to bed, obviously the functioning of that, what we talked about the last time during the end of my first term, remains the same. I am frustrated the fact that we couldn't come together and we couldn't just get the one thing that we needed done, done. Not only was, was I advocating for Hormel, but I was also advocating for Blooming Prairie and also the Shooting Star Trail, which is something that I have been advocating for the last four years. All four of those, or all three of those projects had a possibility of being in the bonding bill, yet I never saw one nor was I able to vote on one. So I want to apologize for the crazy chaos that happened at the end there, but I did want to put some rumors to rest. We are still kind of going through the 1,400-page bill that was shoved at the very end and about five minutes at the end of session. In that bill, from what I understand, was housing, was higher ed, taxes, labor. What else is in there? There are several other omnibus bills. One of the things that was pushed in there that I think is going to have a great impact, oh, and the fix to paid family leave. The fix to paid family leave would, they found, they readjusted how much the payroll tax is going to be when it starts in 2026. And when it was first passed in 2023, we were told that it would be about .7, .70. They looked, so then splitting it down the, down the middle, employee, employer, .35, right? After doing more fiscal analysis, they found that that actually has increased to .88. And they readjusted that if there are small employee, small businesses, I think it was 50 under, that it would just be .66. And so those are still initial numbers, but again, this applies to any business that has at least, or nonprofit that has at least one employee that works 80 hours a year. So it has not been completely, it has not been rolled out yet, obviously, in 2026 is when it's supposed to go into effect. We're still hiring all of the 400 employees that will be starting a whole new agency for paid family leave. The, some other really good things that were, some good things that were passed, public safety was a really amazing bill this year. If you talk to Tori from Crime Victim Services, you know that their federal funding has been cut by 40%. And so the budget that we got for a supplemental budget was about $10 million. 9.4 million of that went to Crime Victim Services. And so we will see that here in, in Austin, which was really, really important. We also saw the bill that I was advocating for, which was money that would go to grants for service dogs for our first responders, and that was given about $100,000. We also saw there were some differences, some updating in predatory offenders, looking at those who are custodial guardians and who gets to be notified when there's a change in protective orders. All of these things updating are going to save lives and I was proud to vote for that bill. There was one little frustration in there, which was actually passed separately, is out of all the bills that could have been passed that were controversial, this was the least controversial. It was banning trigger, these binary triggers, which is, has been banned in Florida, but the language in the bill that we have in Minnesota is very vague and so we need to update that actually. But with that is increased penalty on straw purchases, which was incredibly important as we saw what happened in Burnsville. There were some really good things that happened in, for secondary education, which is looking at paid apprenticeship for student teachers. This is a pilot program that would look at about 200 teachers and paying them about, paying them some money to go through student teaching. I think this is a Band-Aid and I have a better solution that I'm really excited to hopefully get across the finish line in my third term if that is, if that is so able to do. Let's see, the one, one that we had a loosening of requirements and permitting requirements for environmental agencies as we look at the 2040, 100% free of carbon, the majority party saw, oh my goodness, the permitting process for some of these green energy processes have gone on for years. And so they have loosened some of the permitting processes for that, which has been really good for our, for our energy and electric grid. However, I'd like to see that also expanded. The last thing that I'll talk to you about is, is something that was kind of slipped into that 1,400-page bill, and this is called the misclassification of employees. This bill is something that will, it creates a new agency and it clarifies and provides additional penalties and enforcement for misclassification of employees and construction employees, including independent contractors, and establishes a new multi-part independent contractor test for building, construction and improvement services. When we look at the people who are independent contractors here in, in Austin, they will be hurt by this. This was going to be something that's going to be very onerous. Not only is it a very onerous, what is it, a test to make sure that they aren't misclassifying employees, but if they find that there is any, like even if it's a paper error, not only are they fined hef, like heavily, but all the sites that they're working on have to be immediately stopped before that they, before they, and, and all this has to be rectified before they're able to start again. So I'm thinking of places like Joseph's. This is going to be really impactful to them. So that was kind of, we, we tried to fight that one off a little bit and, but it is going to be a pretty onerous mandate on our employees. So other than that, I, I know that it was kind of a whirlwind at the very end. If you have any other questions, sports betting obviously didn't get through. There was some cannabis fix that we're going through with, several of it was a little weird. There was also, I'm trying to think of some of the things that were kind of shoved through in the last minute. And then higher ed was in there where they, they were given a budget, I think about 500K. And so they're looking at, looking at daycare at some of the facilities. One really exciting thing that got passed though, is we were offered what Mayor King came up and, and talked about, our $350,000 to do a training program at Riverland for water operators and wastewater treatment operators. That did get passed through the jobs, the jobs bill, workforce bill, and that's really exciting. We are going to be doing some, a press release on that on June 17th. So it's going to be really exciting for that. If you have any questions, I know that was super whirlwindy and I could talk probably a lot longer, but I, I appreciate your support and I appreciate all of the time that you gave me your feedback and all the times that you came and told me how certain things would affect you. Thank you for the work that you do. You guys are important in our community and I really appreciate the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Mueller. We appreciate your representation up there for us. I know you fight hard for us. Sometimes doesn't work out, but it's a process. I appreciate what you do. Thank you. Counsel, anything for Representative Mueller?
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Patty. All right. Moving on to reports and recommendations.
Craig? The Dangerous Dog hearing is canceled. That was on the 5th at 4:00 PM. So that frees you up for attending Fourth Avenue Fest from 5 to 8 on the 5th, put on by our Culture and Arts Commission and other folks. Check out the lineup, that'd be fun for you to attend. And then also want to note, I think this is the first meeting without Jason Brant with KUS. I think that's a loss for our community and, and keeping people informed on what's going on in their local government. And so we miss him being here.
Right.
Otherwise, that's all I have.
All right. Counsel, Laura?
Craig mentioned it, but I will repeat. Fourth Avenue Fest is Wednesday, 5 to 8, live music, open swim at the swimming pool, canoe and kayak rides on Mill Pond, food trucks, fire truck. It's all free. It's great, going to be great weather, great time to come out, bring the whole family and enjoy our park system. It's funded by Impact Austin, Austin Area Foundation, Mauer County Soil Water Conservation District and Friends of the Nature Center, as well as some, a very small portion of the city budget. I also want to say thank you to Stephen and our engineering department for very quick work on the transfer station. Two weeks ago, we, we were, we really knew we didn't want to close the transfer station and we also knew the current provider wasn't going to, going to run it anymore and we didn't want to take it on as the city and the county didn't want to take it on. So thank you for the, for the quick work in making what we, what the best, the best possible outcome happen. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Mike?
Yeah, kind of to explain a little bit on what Craig had mentioned earlier, you know, this is actually a nice crowd for us, but I can always guarantee at any city council meeting, there was always two folks in the audience. Eric from the Austin Daily Herald and Jason from KUS. And unfortunately, KUS is not doing any sort of local coverage anymore. And so I would really encourage you, we have one outlet left for local news that just focuses on Austin and the close surrounding communities. If you are not a subscriber, six bucks, folks, six bucks, you get a digital copy to your email twice a week. You can access the full website. And this is not me shilling for the Austin Daily Herald because I make any money from it. They will print things that sometimes make me a little frustrated, but that's what a good newspaper does. And so if you want to have local news, please subscribe.
Thanks, Mike. Jeff?
Yeah, two things. I think we've spent an awful lot of time and energy lately on employee engagement. After we, I spent some, I think most of us spent some time together on Wednesday, the last week. And what I would, Mr. Clark and your staff, I'd really like to see a couple of things
see a couple of things relative, in relatively short order from you, and that is, what does success look like? If we're spending all this money, um, and investing all of this time, and I think it's valuable, but I don't have a sense of, how do we know when we've won? Wha- how do we measure success? Not, we'll feel better, not, it'll be nicer, but do we, can we assign some quantitative measures of success for employee engagement? Um, I think that's important. Um, and I'll tell you right now, if it involves, you know, lowering turnover, we're gonna probably all start, our heads, a couple of us are, you're gonna see our heads start spinning, because turnover isn't necessarily a terrible thing. Second, we got six months before we have to take another bite at the hel- healthcare apple, and it's gonna be sour, and there's gonna be a worm in the apple. Um, and I hope we are thinking now about, what are our strategies for our healthcare renewal to minimize, to help our employees understand the problems that we have with the economics of that, and, uh, how we can do a better job of communicating the problems and our solutions, um, so this doesn't turn into another real sour event come about November of this year. Please, sir. That's it.
Thank you. Jeff?
Uh, just want to remind everyone out there that if you're interested in running for city council, filing closes tomorrow at 5:00 PM, so.
Thank you, Jason.
Uh, three quick things. One is, congratulations to all the recent graduates, Austin Public Schools, Pacella Catholic Schools, um, and everyone in the area, obviously exciting times for a lot of families, and moving on to the next chapter. Second, would echo everything said about KU S, um, you know, it's disappointing to see less local news and coverage, and, you know, as an elected official, I know that transparency and the coverage that's provided in the local media is really, really important, because it holds us accountable, it holds, it keeps the public informed, and so it's disappointing to, to be moving probably the wrong direction on that. I get the economics of it, but it's, it's just, it's sad. Um, and then finally, wanted to express our condolences to the Minneapolis officer who lost his life in the line of duty last week, and, you know, make it clear to Chief McKeeke and Chief McCoy and all of our first responders, just how valued your roles in our community. We know that they are incredibly challenging jobs, they are incredibly risky jobs, your guys and gals are heroes, we appreciate them, and they continue to have our continued and full support.
Thank you, Jason. Paul?
Uh, just wanted to add to Jason's comments on the ash trees. Um, if we're out and about and we see something that looks bad, send him an email. I sent him a couple a week ago that I looked, that looked very dangerous, and I see that Park and Rec Department got to him in the last couple of days, so if you see something, just keep your eyes open, because you guys can't catch it all. There's some sick-looking trees out there.
Thank you, Paul. Joyce?
I just want to, again, uh, welcome Isaac to, as the honorary, I'm really happy to have him here. Um, and I agree, uh, you know, the whole KU S thing is, it's really sad for Austin. I'll miss seeing Jason here. Um, and I feel like the employee engagement with Soccora last week was a big success. It was for me. I learned a lot about my leadership style and the styles of others, and how they operate and why they operate the way they do, and I just, I think it was a big step in the right direction for us, um, so I'm looking forward to more, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Joyce. Yeah, my takeaway from the last Wednesday's, uh, employee engagement was the energy in the room was certainly robust, and I just think getting everybody in the, well, 37, 40 people in a room together like that, that probably have never been in a room together, and seeing that interaction, and especially in the afternoon was, I was really glad I stuck around for it, I wasn't planning on it, but I was really glad I did, and just that level of, uh, energy was really impactful, so we'll, we'll do it some more tomorrow, so. Um, also, I'd like to, uh, honor the Jan- June work anniversaries, employees of the cities, Randy, Randy Hoffner has 28 years with the Park and Rec, Trish Weikman, 24 years, congratulations, Trish. Kim Hansen, 17 years, uh, John White, eight years with the Park and Rec, Steven Schmidt, wastewater for eight years, Megan Evansen, library seven years, Sally Olson, library for two years, Dwayne Nats, Park and Rec for seven, or, I'm sorry, two, and Ryan Hanson, uh, with the police, uh, one-year anniversary, and Chad Peterson, also one-year anniversary of the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, certainly appreciate their, uh, employment, whether it's been one year or 28, so thank you for helping the city of Austin out.